Hello, I'd like to call to order the Board of Education regular meeting at 7:00 PM on August 8th, 2022. If you could please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board number seven, if you please read the mission statement.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide equality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community.
Okay, thank you. Enroll call.
Candace?
Here.
Deb is absent with notice. Angela?
Here.
I am here. Margaret?
Here.
And Sherry is also absent with notice. Do we have a forum?
Thank you. Next is our approval of the agenda. I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda to remove item number 12 and action item number 13 from the agenda. I'm looking for a motion.
Ms. Pacito, then you have to say that item 14 now becomes 12.
Oh, yes, and item 14 will then become item number 12. Thank you.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I support?
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Pacito?
Yes.
You have to ask for discussion before you go.
Will there be any discussion from the approval of the agenda? Any discussion for anyone? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next, I'm looking for approval of the consent agenda. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Margaret. Any discussion? Can I have support? Danielle? Superintendent Wamsley, do we have any updates? Would you like some?
We have a couple of resignations in our personnel reports. I'll start at those. Katie Carter, who also was one that was hired on the agenda. She resigned last week as the athletics facilities secretary. Rebecca Christensen resigned as the grade start readiness teacher. Keith Christmas will be resigned as the computer technician and lighting and sound technician, effective 8/25. Mr. Castle is resigning as high school principal. He took a position in another district. And Mr. Pacito is resigning as the FTC robotics head coach. There's several new hires. Kalen Brown is a DLA teacher. One of the hires that is also resigning is Katie Carter. Kara Fair is an assistant cook at the Richmond Middle School. Elizabeth Fitzgerald was hired as fifth grade teacher. Michael Fullich was hired as a general maintenance custodian for the middle school. Here with us tonight is Megan Lazar, art teacher for the middle school. Thank you, Megan.
Welcome.
Denise Menzotti-Craft, assistant cook at the middle school. Eric Nash, math teacher for Richmond High School was hired. Lisa Ranz was hired as a computer network technician. Kaylee Yost was hired as the music teacher for not only Willow Lee Elementary School, but also the high school or the middle school in K-5. There were no errors that brought to my attention regarding the minutes from the June 27th special meeting or the June 27th regular meeting. There were no questions that I received regarding the June and July claims of the candidates.
Thank you. Any more discussion from anyone?
Mr. Wamsley, there was the one appointment on the personnel.
Oh, yes, thank you. On the appointment, you had already hired him. We had posted for a JAD football coach. That was because of Mr. Slater retiring in June. So after going through the interview process, Brandon Day was appointed to that position. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do you need no other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, motion carries. Next up, we have presentations. We have the 2022-23 Student Parent Handbook. Mrs. Zara?
Get that back to your right. You all your presentations.
Yeah. Hi, Giddy. To summarize the changes to the Student Parent Handbook, you can see that we have some personnel changes within the first few pages. The lost and found item collection changed from twice a year to quarterly on page 11 IOR charity. We'll appreciate that so they can get those seatbelts closed for things that aren't picked up in time. On page 19, under asthma inhalers and EpiPen, it's actually in accordance with a student health plan, not a 504, so we are changing that. On page 25, we're asking that if students want to retake a test, a form must be submitted to the instructor with a parent signature. We're asking for that family engagement so that parents and families are aware that the students need to remake, you know, retake that test and involve them in letting them know, hey, I need to, I need another chance at this just to be able to keep the lines of communication going.
Okay.
I had a little star in that because I wanted to ask why we were doing that. So that, so the parents aren't engaged. So is that because the teacher doesn't have any communication with the parent about the fact the student's not doing well in the class?
No, it doesn't have to do with that. It's just an additional step so that they're aware of how many assessments that they might need to retake. And that way, just so that all three, the parent, the student, and the teacher are all in the know of how many retakes and things like that.
And then what happens, because we know that it could, what happens if student can't get their parent to sign that form?
I mean, I think that that would be a conversation between the teacher and that student of, hey, I've tried and, you know, what are my options here? And I mean, the teacher's going to allow the retakes since it says in our policy 50% of them can be retaken.
But if it says in the handbook that it has to, the form has to be signed by the parent and that they can't get the parent to do it, where it should, I'm just throwing this out there, should there be something in there that says something to the effect that if they can't get their disengaged parent or whatever the situation is, that we're still allowing them to retake the test? That was my big thing when I read it.
Absolutely.
How does that work?
It actually, we can add that sentence. It gives, because there's always a unique situation with everything that's.
Anything could be going in.
What we can do is let's work on, we'll work on some language and bring it back because you're going to be approving it for the next meeting and point it out, see how we have to build that into, to accommodate for that possibility. That's, that's.
Sounds good.
Just the flexibility.
Thank you.
Well, just went into law is a financial literacy credit is now required for students to be able to graduate. So a half-credit financial literacy is now required beginning with the class of 2027. So that is reflected on page 29 so that our upcoming students can realize that that is going to be part of their math scope and sequence. Also on page 29, we had some changes to our science scope and sequence that we changed a few years ago that is now reflected into our handbook. I know you all will appreciate this change. Currently, our business class was the only CTE course eligible to receive a cord for senior graduation ceremony. And we have changes so that any CTE course can receive the royal blue cord and not just one class. We had a change regarding formalizing our zero tolerance policy regarding drugs and drug paraphernalia. You can see on page 49, we are outlining the consequences of each of these offenses.
So this was a conversation we had as a subcommittee with the board. So the language that we looked at and talked about were before certain things came as an automatic to the board and certain things did not. So we were trying to create a level of offense, whether it's 10, 11, or more, ultimately to the board for whether it's an indepth suspension or something in between. You'll notice in the language, we also put in referrals to care to provide support for students if they're dealing with, in this case, maybe it's alcohol, tobacco, addiction that we need to address. We were trying to capture the language from that, from that meeting.
Okay, so my question, I guess that this, I had tagged too, this one, that committee met and from what my understanding, we met, we tossed stuff back and forth, something was going to come back to the board. I would have thought that we would have brought this because, as a discussion, is everybody good with it before, because this is, this is, this is what we're doing and we should have some kind of discussion as a board. Candace, for one, wasn't even part of any of this discussion of why we even were looking at doing this, why we wanted to do it. And with the exception of Angela and Deb and I, no one else sitting on the board even knows what that, because I don't think we ever got anything from Deb that told us what that committee did, anything like that, correct?
No, but I do think she was, we were all under agreement that we were going to get it at now. And now we can talk about it and discuss it and see if we want to make changes at this current moment, correct? Superintendent Wamsley, is that kind of how we were discussing that?
Rather than it coming to us first is.
Um, I've, I've read over it. It pretty much seems to capture what we discussed at that meeting. So now I thought that us here today, we'd have a chance to discuss it, I guess.
Right. And so then if there was anyone else sitting at the table that had an issue, we could talk about, you know, maybe someone says, oh, think about something different before it gets put in here. And then two weeks, we have two people that aren't here. I don't know. I just.
Correct. I think that's, it's time for us to do that now, to have that conversation now. I'm okay with the language and what has been put in. We have until next, in two weeks from now to also continue to look. If you haven't had a chance to thoroughly look over it, I know Deb already understands it and I know Sherry will be looking at this as well. And if she had any questions, she could back up. Do you, how do you feel about it? Do you feel it?
I don't, I don't have any problem with it, though. But I was part of the meeting. And so I, I get, you know, because this, this looks fine and I think we went there kind of with three different opinions a little bit. We were, we were in line, the three of us, but we had some, three different viewpoints. And so I guess I just thought we were going to have a little more, a committee report, if you will. Talk about it. So if everybody says, hey, yeah, that sounds good. Good, good work, the committee, thank you, it looks good. And then it goes to the administrators. So they put, they're putting something in here because the reality is it's August 8th, two weeks, school starts. If for some reason, and it might not happen, Angela, but if some reason the board thinks, oh, you know, I don't know, I just, I don't think we did our process.
I can, I can appreciate that. But being that the process is what it is now, do you have any comments or anything you feel that might need to be readdressed or changed in this section? Anybody that is sitting here today?
I have read it over and I agree. I think that something definitely needed to be put in.
Do you understand why we, why we wanted to do it in the first place? Were you made aware of what we were?
Kind of, each case was treated specifically and now there's an actual.
Protocol, yes. Protocol, yes. Well, we, we have protocol. Everything we did was correct. It's just as a board, we were, there were situations that were happening and we had feelings, I think maybe would be the right word to say. And so we were looking at how can we streamline things better? Not that there was nothing wrong with what we were doing, anything like that. So just so we're, we're clear on that, that that, and that wasn't where the board was coming from, where we said, let's sit down and see what we can figure out.
Okay, and do you have any, how do you feel about it as far as now, Danielle? And we still will have time, correct? Mrs. Zara, if we want to make changes.
It's not approved until.
Yeah, it's not approved until next. And we always have the ability to pull this out, approve what the board does want to approve and bring it back and make the adjustment.
That's true.
If not necessarily, so if Deb or Sherry comes back and has, because at the next board meeting, more than likely, we will have another board member sitting up here at the table who wasn't part of that process.
Correct, correct.
We can, we both should be, improve everything without this. And then we publish the handbook that way and then come back to this if that's.
Or it quite simply will be okay. I just, I just was speaking and you, I'm not so much concerned because Deb was part of the committee, but Sherry's not here. And their responsibility falls on Sherry and on Deb to make sure, you know what I'm saying? So that everybody's ready on the 22nd.
And I, and I will, maybe I'll even get ahold of Deb, see if she can throw something out there, maybe reach out. I mean, it's been kind of canned, I guess, already, so I don't know if that's, that step's necessary.
But it doesn't hurt. It is good for discussions. It doesn't hurt to put a synopsis out of just what we did, then everybody has a little bit of that, too.
Okay, yeah, great. Okay, I agree.
My only question I had on it is that second one. It seems vague. What happens? Like, okay, we refer to superintendent for 11 or more days suspension. Does Mr. Wamsley decide the number of days?
For the second one, yes. The second one is, well, anytime I'm involved, it's a conversation with the principal because they know more of the student and the facts than I typically do. But on the second one, the superintendent has a discretion to suspend up to 59 days by state law.
Gotcha.
So that's where it would be that range for second, where if we've done 10 days in the first one, depending on the severity, it could be up to 59 days. If it's a third offense, that now becomes the board's decision, which is 60 days and beyond.
Sure. Okay.
Does anybody else have any other questions or feedback regarding the Student Parent Handbook?
Can we just make sure we've spun Mr. Trend's name correctly? Thank you.
Start on one of the first couple pages. Are we all good? Any more discussion? Thank you. Okay, next presentation, 2022 Summer School Programs. Mrs. Zara again, thank you. No, 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 don't touch it.
So I have Ms. Rebecca Herculet here, who served as our summer school supervisor, and she's going to be co-presenting with us tonight about the summer learning camp that just ended August. Some data, because I love data. So let's talk, let's talk about enrollment. We had an increase of enrollment by 231% increase from last year. You can see our numbers from the Kinder Connect class from 2020-21 to 2021-22 school year, the first fundamentals, the STEM literacy, the math mindset, and the middle school readers and writers camp. So you can see the difference from years to years in the academic camps. Here is some data regarding our enrollment by grade. You can see that by far, we had the highest in our preschool, which was our Kinder Connect. So just keep in mind, as you're looking at this, the preschool attended the Kinder Connect class. The current kindergartners went to the first grade fundamental class to be able to get them ready with those fundamental skills. First grade attended the STEM literacy and so on. But just to be clear about the grade levels fans, about who attended summer school. And for the first time, we had ninth and 10th graders that participated for the very first time that wasn't a credit recovery class. So that was fantastic. We launched enrichment courses for the very first time. 75.5% of students enrolled in academic class also chose to do an enrichment camp. So they were a huge success. The students absolutely loved them. You can see our highest enrollment was the arts and crafts class, followed up by Lego City, ceramics, classic games, gardening, grossology, and puzzles and pie. All in all, it was a fantastic camp. We had just an absolute blast doing this. I had a teacher return their keys and literally said, when do we do this again? That was so fun. I was like, oh, six years. So it was great.
So we had a registration night on May 10th at the high school gym, and we had over 100 people come to the event. So we had a great turnout. Kids were able to go through with their parents and see what types of crafts they would be making as we asked any of the teachers that could attend to set up a table to kind of showcase their camp and offer that to the students and parents. Kids could see what they would be dissecting in the grossology lab, what books they might get to take home at the end of the middle school readers and writers. And then we had food service there, too, to talk about what meals would be offered and free breakfast, free lunch. At the end of camp, the last week, I had sent out surveys to parents. We got about 23 completed responses, so you'll see some of the parent responses in the presentation. Many parents were just excited about the opportunity for their child to participate in a learning experience over the summer. And we even had a couple of parents that were saying, my child doesn't want to go home at this middle, they want to stay. I even had one parent tell me at arrival that her daughter was up and ready to go before her alarm even went off. So that was a good thing to hear. So they were very pleased overall with the results of the campaign. I also sent out a staff survey because I had, I personally wanted to know kind of what staff had thought, and then I know that they wanted to share their experiences, too, because all of them really did have a good time. In addition to myself, we had 15 different teachers there. We had three parapros, three substitute teachers, and then we had, you know, transportation, food service, as well as all the custodial staff helping make things run smoothly, too. This was a really unique opportunity for me, being a high school teacher. I really enjoyed being able to work with staff from all three different buildings and the different grade levels. Since working with the young, young students was different for me. I'm used to doing that through 12th grade, so that was a fun opportunity. As I do want to get my administration degree eventually, I'll be done with my master's degree this week in special ed, so that's a good thing. And I'm hoping to move forward and get an administration degree here soon.
It was pretty funny seeing all the middle school staff, actually seeing the little kids get off the bus. They were, they were, we had graders at the doors and then walking the kids, you know, especially the little ones who were at this big old middle school, you know? And their backpacks were bigger than they are and they're trotting through. You just saw the middle school teachers like, oh my gosh, I love this so much. Come on, little guys. You know, everybody was just all smiles all day. It was, it was really wonderful.
I also sent out a student survey. So I had partitioned out time for the different teachers to take their classes to computer labs at the middle school so that they could complete the survey online. And then we also had a paper copy for the preschool kindergarten students to do.
With happy faces on them because they can't quite articulate, you know, so.
So they got to color if they were sad or happy based on the question. So that was fun. We have 50 student responses in the online survey and then several in the paper copies. A lot of them said that their favorite parts were their teacher. They enjoyed the enrichment camps a lot, making new friends, which I thought was a good thing to see, too, especially for the young kids or people that are going to be new to the district. And then some even said that their favorite part was everything, so that was a good thing to hear. And then we did ask for their, or gave them an opportunity to say what types of camps they would like to see offered next year. So we did get some good responses if it was offered again, what they would like to see. So the next few slides are some pictures showcasing some different things that we did throughout the camp. So you'll see gardening up there. They did little greenhouses with beans and the kids got to take them home and hang them up in the window. Several of the grossology camp, doing their dissections. The Lego City that you'll see in the bottom, Mrs. Durst actually invited the mayor and the city manager to come into her Lego City class. And the students got to ask questions and find out how a city runs and operates and then show off their different buildings that they created for their city. And then they set it up the last week and the students from other camps got to go through and walk around and ask questions of the other students to see what they decided to put in their city.
And this was all in all, was pretty funny, I think, from, I think, the business department as stuff was coming in through central office, you know, here's the box of stuff, what is this? This is Uno. Like, oh, it's mine, it's mine. What is this? Are these the turtles? What? Wait, like real ones? Wait, yeah, it's got to be Renees. So it was, yeah, so it was pretty unique, seeing all these different enrichment camps and all the kids fully engaged. Like I said, the grossology camp, we had seventh through 11th graders participate in that camp. So to get high school and up and coming, they had a blast.
And some of these pictures, you'll see that we did spirit days throughout summer camp. So when parents had registered their child, I put together a welcome letter that was mailed home with a spirit day calendar for all 15 days. So you'll see a couple of pictures of Christmas in July, which is a fun one to see the kids getting off the bus with all their Christmas gear on. And we had twin day. And then we also had America Day, which you might have seen the picture that was posted on that district Facebook page, of all of us at summer camp bringing our Americana gear. We had Blue Devil Day, Beach Day, pajama day, just things to get the kids involved. And they really enjoyed that.
Any questions, anyone?
I just, when the survey where they asked or said, what other things did they want to do besides that? What were some of the things that they, that interested them?
Like wood crafts, some kind of carpentry was one of the responses. They would have liked to have seen a Lego camp gear for the older kids as well. Computers was another one. They wanted to do computers. I'd also heard arts and crafts for like an older age group.
That was a huge hit. Garden in first grade. If you don't get two sections of that, I was like, wow. Music.
Okay, good.
Theater, I'm hoping to run.
Yeah, episode two, yeah, yeah.
So we also, the week after, we ran the very first girls' STEM camp. This was a, an incredible program brought to us by the MISD. We were asked to participate because we are known for our STEM presence here at Richmond. We had eight girls participate. They were, the theme was tinkering toys. And they actually got to see, and if you saw on Facebook, they actually got to use, they had demonstrations about power tools, being able to use live circuits. And they had demonstrations, they actually got to build the actual assisted technology toys. At the end of the camp, we actually did a showcase with the parents and community members got to come in to view the work of the students. And this had some really positive feedback, too, from the community of just thanking us for this wonderful program and opportunity. And I guarantee there will be more enrollment in this because it was a complete hit. So. And then, of course, our, our next steps with summer school is actually cohorting the students, looking at data to be able to look at the kids enrolled in our Kinder Connect class to see how well they do against the peers that did not attend summer school, to see how well they do in comparison, as well as overall growth, to be able to track the effect size of participation in summer camps. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the summer camp?
Thank you.
I would just like to thank Ms. Zara and Herculet. This was a major undertaking. We've never done anything like this then. She went full force, they both did. And any, any issues that had been worked out, they figured out a way and were able to do it, especially in the midst of different construction projects going around in the district. I think registration, we had a storm that night. We're supposed to.
One day it rained that whole week.
So being able to adapt, so just seeing the kids' excitement and joy is very remarkable. So congratulations and thank you.
And it was talked about a lot out in the community, truly, hearing different people talk, it's just really exciting and that we're just going to make it better and better. It's just, it's great. Thank you.
Is your second year doing this?
First.
Oh, wow. Holy smokes.
Well, thank you so much, ladies. Thank you for all your hard work over the summer. Thank you. All right, next up is our esports presentation. Ms. Zara?
So I had the opportunity to be able to attend a training through RNC. There were two spots in all of Eastern Michigan to go to this training. There was one representative from McComb County that got to go, and I got to go because once again, they know about our computer science class, they know about our STEM presence just to see, hey, do you want to learn about this? And I'm like, of course, I always want to learn about stuff. This sounds great. So I attended and I learned some stuff. So I did learn about esports, some fascinating esports statistics. Esports is the fastest growing sport in the world. You can see that it's. You can see that it's currently worth $1 billion and is expected to reach $1.6 billion in the market in 2024. The esports audience is growing. It will grow to $645 million globally by 2023. Last year, high school students were awarded $16 million in esports scholarships to help students that are interested in this to be able to become game developers, to go into gaming marketing and all of those entrepreneur type of gaming industry that is a growing industry as well. I know that, because I attend the county CTE meetings, that right now at the state level, they are debating creating an actual CTE pathway for gaming, esports and those kinds of things. So it's really, we're kind of on the forefront of the things to come here. You can see that these are currently the high schools associated right now that are actually in a league that compete. So not a lot, but, I mean, it's growing. And we have the, you know, opportunity to be one of these high schools that do it. You can see that there's a lot of benefits. I share also in the vision that Mr. Monza has that every single student feels that they belong and can participate and be connected to a staff member here at Richmond. The statistic is 45% of students involved in esports have not participated in any other sport or activity. So you're really targeting a group of students that really don't do anything else, that they can become a community and a team themselves. You know, talking about it, getting to, you know, and talking about it, seeing if people are interested. And we actually have a student who is handicapped and who is interested. So thinking about opportunities for students is extremely important when you think about running a club. I want to be very clear that I would run this as a club, not as a sport. That I would launch this with about eight to 10 students. And it would be after school, based on the, the schedule and everything. And you can see the different roles. Everybody thinks that, you know, gamers, they just sit and they play a game. Well, I know, I know, it's the perception. It's a tough one to break. But there's actually lots of roles that go along with this. You have your organizers, you have your IT people. People that tend to play esports are actually the people that tend to create their own computers and things like that. So they actually do their own IT support as well. You have your content creators, kids that are also using applications to be able to create their own games in which, you know, like Miss Compo's going to be doing for CTE. You have your marketing, you have your, your coaches, your analysts. There's tons of data that goes along with gaming. And you have students that are being a part of all of those different areas. And you can see that this is the club formation. It's actually a lot more structured than you would think. But you do have your, your, you know, your websites, you do have your art, you have your analysts, you have your managers. And this is just a sample one. Obviously, this would be a conversation with the coach. But you just have a lot of parts and roles that go along with having an esports team. It's actually quite structured, and everybody has their own roles and responsibilities. Not everybody is gaming at the same time. You actually have some types of kids that are analyzing the games and talking about the trends and talking about how to bridge communication better between the players and things like that. So you can see that there's just lots of avenues for them to be able to go into. You can see that the global market is asking for gamers, as it is a huge growing market. So like I said, I would launch about eight to 10 students running this. And you can just see the different roles that go along with all of the different avenues of having the, the team together. So what skills, certifications, possible careers that they could go into for each of the different content areas.
So would they be playing the games or are they creating?
Yes, they will be. So they would be on a rotation schedule. But they also are part of something else with it. There, you don't just have the, the players and then you have just the data analysis or you just have your, your, you know, your IT. They would all be rotating and get a feel for the entire experience to be able to also build up their own resume to be part of getting those scholarships to go out into that field and things like that, acquiring that set of tools for the, you know, their tool belt and that.
But they're not actually learning how to create yet. They're learning about it, but not how to do it. They're not actually creating a game.
No.
At that time. They're playing, okay. They're already playing games and they're already creating.
Yes.
But learning the.
Yeah, and there's a whole different backside to the gaming, which is learning the codes and everything. Mostly, this is about the participation, this is about the collaboration, communication, the teamwork that you have, just like on any other team.
The learning of that is what the program or the course at Mrs. Compo is going to be teaching. That we can't start it this year in the fall at the high school. And that, I think the numbers were at max right off the bat.
It was our highest asked for class at the high school.
So how do you, I think you said eight to 10, how do you, what's the criteria? How, how do you get eight to 10 and what if you have 25?
You would have to do tryouts, see who would make the team. For the first year, you know, it's, you know, limited budget, and we're just trying to get a feel for if there's an interest.
Okay.
To see, hey, are you interested? And then of course, you know, kind of like our summer camps, when they see it and, oh wow, this is cool. And then of course, more, you know, more could possibly come.
It's also, as she said, the education, because sometimes you have students that will hear this and think, well, I'll just go after school and play games.
Right.
There is so much more, just, just like robotics, not just building a robot. There is so much more to the program that, that the students participate in. And that's, for some, they want, and for others, that may not be their fave.
And you do learn an aspect of coding and master coding in esports as well. So they're learning the, you know, kind of understanding some of those, you know, kinks and things like that as well.
What grades would you?
High school.
Just high school.
So you're, you're going to be the coach? Is that what I heard you say a few months ago?
Oh, I, I need time for bidding. I mean, I would love for, I would love to participate.
I would, so I just threw that at you.
We'll see. We're going to post and we're going to see. I've got, you know, my feelers out to see if somebody's interested in coaching. I think it would be a great opportunity for anybody to do. I want to iterate that the games that we would select is E for everyone, because they're for everyone. But, you know, Rocket League I know is very popular, and League of Legends is also very popular. But these are the choices of games. And of course, I believe a lot in student voice and choice. So obviously, getting that team established and then deciding what team, what game we're going to focus on and then actually enroll in a season and actually compete in a, in a tournament against other teams. So just like any other sports team, you would have a schedule. We might be playing a different school in that map of Michigan that I showed earlier, but another team that's also registered. You actually get to play against a team and the coaches discuss on a platform called Discord. Everything's monitored and, you know, you've got your student code of conduct and everything and making sure that everything is, you know, good sportsmanship. Because, you know, things can get heated with the, with the thumb action there, so. You can see a sample schedule, a fall 2022 weekly schedule, so they could also choose multiple games. It really does depend on how the club wants to function and how they want to set up their schedule. I was thinking, just kind of, you know, imagining this program is running it two days a week. And then you could just, you would have your games, you'd have your practice your first hour, and then you'd have your game the second hour. It's typically how most esports leagues run. You can do a fall season, which I'm not sure if we'll make the preseason, but we will certainly make the spring season to be able to actually play the tournaments. And we can play scrimmages and everything and still play against other teams here. But, you know, there is like an actual registration and being able to play the playoffs and the championships and everything like that. So, any comments or questions about esports? Club?
So our plan is to run it like we did when we, the board, we did Equestrian and eventually trapped it. It started off kind of as a pilot program, see if the interest is there and so forth. I know Renee spent a lot of time, she references planting the seeds, talking to kids, finding staff members who have a passion for this. And some of the staff members came out of the woodwork that I never suspected. But they are, so there is definitely an interest and a passion out there. I think, I think it's going to grow, so our, our intent is to run it this year as more of a pilot program. Let's get the interest to come into it and it becomes, evolves, much like a schedule being all of our other sports and clubs going into it. So it's a great fit for what we're trying to do with the whole STEM computer technology. And it's now an avenue for students to, to really do what they're learning in the classrooms.
And if the state does approve for this to become a CT pathway, we would already have an established team.
Right.
And we could follow suit with an entire new CT pathway and get credit for that as well. So we would really be on the forefront of this. They said this in the training, and I just, I, I, oh my gosh, it blew my mind, right? So esports is not the future, it's already here. So we'd be one of the very first districts to do it.
And this plays a role for the SEL also?
Yeah, so you're learning about these team aspects. So when you think about it, you've got some types of kids that, they're not physical, they're not going to play physical sports. You think about what comes along with being on a team that is beyond physical capability. You think about communication, the collaboration, the teamwork, the learning how to lose together, mental toughness. All of that stuff falls along with that social and emotional wellbeing of students that would normally not be able to get that camaraderie and that opportunity. So really, you know, this is just an opportunity for them to be able to do that.
Gives them an opportunity to belong to something that they don't right now. That to me is, is the big thing.
And, you know, we have a lot of gamers out there, you know.
It's okay.
Great, thank you. We're excited to hear how it goes. Keep us posted. Okay, next up, we have one more here, presentation. Professional Learning Communities, presentation please. Thank you, Ms. Sara.
So PLC stands for Professional Learning Communities. It is my goal that we establish a PLC here at Richmond to be able to set aside time for our teachers to be able to collaborate and really work on looking at student, student work, being evidence-driven, and being able to analyze formative, common formative assessments and being able to actually go through the formal PLC process. PLC is not a grade-level collaboration, that, that's a grade-level meeting. A PLC is a very structured, organized meeting that is talking about student achievement and how can we yield these high-yielding strategies to be able to make sure that all students are successful. So a PLC is a whole, is a whole school or whole district effort in which educators are committed to working collaboratively in ongoing process of collective inquiry and action research to achieve better results for all the students that they serve. It's based on the premise that the quality of a school can only be as good as the quality of the educators within it. Therefore, the best strategy, and we all know our biggest asset is our teachers, and to be able to invest in them so that we have this time to be able to do this is going to yield our highest results for student achievement. And it guarantees all students succeed. You can see that there are four questions asked in a PLC, and I'll let you read those. There's right here, but they're very impactful questions. Those are good questions, huh? So you can see that I would like to bring in Solution Tree for two days for this year. One day to be able to work with our administrative team to train us on this process so that we can then go out and be able to do this with our staff. The second day to be able to do a PD at the building level so that there can be an introduction to the PLC process. And you can see how this process helps the leaders and it also helps the teachers with building that collaborative culture, working on student achievement and building, and basically hopefully not, you know, working in silos. If we all put our efforts together, you know, we're going to be able to achieve a lot more for kids. So the proposal is going to be at the next board meeting. But like I said, it's a two-day PD from Solution Tree that I'm hoping to be able to bring in this process for, for our district.
This was funded through grants.
Yes.
It went into our grant application. S3. It is costly. It, it's a price of about $13,000. But if you think back to eight years ago, when I threw out the, we actually sat in this room with the board and I made the comment, are we ready to guarantee learning for all students? We had a conversation, I think the table was right over here for memory searching correctly.
Yep.
Because the board table is on the other side. And it's very simple words, but it's a really powerful statement because the basis of the PLC is no student should never not succeed. Every student should be succeeding and growing and being pushed. So as a culture, as a district, how do we respond when kids are not achieving? You know, we have been asking the hard questions, when I say we, my, the team has been asking. You know, just because we've always done something doesn't mean we need to continue doing it. If we're not getting the results, we need to rethink our resources. And this district has done that, and I can almost speak to my tenure. We have reallocated resources many times, shifting them and prioritizing to address areas of weaknesses that we need to improve on. But really what, that when you look at that fourth question and going beyond, when kids already know it, what do we do with it now? And that's really your high-flying students and your, your accelerated students that we need to be challenging them, those students too. So to start, we got to have a basis and a training. I was fortunate, Solution Tree came to, when I was in my previous district. We had 25 buildings. You can imagine the price tag that was to, to, to train all those. But it really changed the thinking and the direction of staff in the classroom on getting a collective buy-in. And when they brought this to me, I really began thinking, the amount of, of staff that had retired, and Deb will probably say this if she was here. There used to be a banner up there talking about a PLC before the construction. And at some point in this district, there was a training that was done. But if you're not living and breathing that, PLCs is not an event we do on Tuesday afternoon. It is a philosophy or a thought process that we're engaged in each and every hour of the day. So in order for us to move the culture and the staff and provide them the support, we need to provide them the background and training so they have a true understanding of it. And we have a perfect opportunity right now with the staff that we have in moving forward and getting us to that next level. It's truly an investment in our staff to move the district forward. So we wanted to give you an opportunity to hear about it. We, we watch every nickel and dime we're spending in this district and trying to get our biggest bang for the luck that we put out there. This is an important concept to get our staff the tools they need to go to that next level. This is a foundation, when you think about it, even on the standards-based grading that we've had, particularly at the middle school. This is the basis of it. What are we, what are we, we're looking for kids to achieve? And what do we do when they're not achieving? This is the foundation of that. And it's now getting common language, it's getting the staff all on, on one page to move us forward as a district. And so I think we are at a prime time right now to, to take advantage and implement this. Because I have yet to meet a staff member that's not trying to do better for our kids. They're trying to figure out, sometimes you run out of strategy, you need to look at it from a different perspective or lens. But, but Renee, when Renee brought this concept or this idea, for me personally, it was looking at where we've been, where we've gone, and it's like the opportune time to do this with our staff. So I 100% support this and would ask the board that we use those allocations for, through our grand dollars, these one-ten dollars that to be able to fund this and not have it necessarily out of general fund at this moment.
So my question though, to, I thought you said you would bring something more next week, right? Or next time or whatever?
It would actually be an action item on the agenda.
Because I'm just thinking, is this just like a, to get the staff buy-in? Because my understanding, from my experience from PLCs when I was at Warren Fitzgerald, is that. that it affects the school year calendar. Is that something that's in the future? Or is that something?
It can, if you're trying to build in supports for kids. Most districts have like a seven-period day, so they may do an early release with teachers.
Right, right.
There's a variety of efforts, or six, I guess it's a seven-period day. There's a variety. Sometimes some districts do a delayed start.
Right.
We aren't there yet because we as a staff are, are not at that point in trying to figure out how we build that time. It could be refiguring the count, that could be a possibility.
So, in reality, her question is correct. It's, it's, when you said foundation, it is buy-in time.
It's, it's, it's very similar to when the middle school approached this board several years ago about the seven-period day. That was not a top-down decision. That was a staff at the middle school saying, we want to provide more opportunities for our kids, and we're willing to change our contract or do letters of agreement to adjust it, to be able to lower class sizes, to be able to put more interventions built into the day. Because getting kids to stay after school isn't working. Having kids skip their lunch and have a lunch buddy isn't working. And I'm going off topic because I don't know if that's what they did at the basis when they started. But that's really, you have to have that staff buy-in to make changes. It's not only the staff, but then there's a level of the parent engagement because we all have to be working together for that same purpose. But you are, it could be that.
Down the road.
Down the road.
But not, this is just more of just educating staff.
Educating the staff and even having the community within the seven hours we have kids every day, how are we operating?
Building a PD during the day and having that like first hour be that creating common formative, that structured PLC, that would be the structure that we would want.
Where this is going to be critical is between now and February. We do approve the course catalog for '23, '24. We have a seven-period day at the high school coming next year. I could easily just put classes and he takes them, but we have the opportunity to build interventions within the class to address kids that aren't, acceleration for kids that are, courses that we've never been able to offer, and how we have the ability in that schedule to be able to offer them. And it's really easy just to do it and put it in, but we need to have the basis behind it for those classes to be successful. This is, this is that opportunity with what we've accomplished so far together with our teachers' union and the board and I, and where, what's coming down the road to get this basis.
So does this platform allow them to uniquely pick and choose individual things that they, as a collection, the teachers may want to incorporate? Or is it, the changes are decided by the administration?
No, it's a collaborative, if you're truly doing the PLC, I don't mean to take your time, you probably answered. If you're truly doing the PLC model, it is, everybody has bought into it. This isn't a top-down approach. This isn't, well, these five teachers are going to do it, we'll let them run with it, but these, we're going to give them a pass. It is a collective group together to, to think about how we're educating kids. Now, I can give you, any teacher, here's a book of 90 standards that they have to teach in a course. The reality is, you're not teaching to any quality 90 standards. Figure out what are those essential skills, and we don't like that word.
I have priority.
Priorities.
Critical concepts.
Critical concepts. What is it that we need kids, students, to master in order for them to be successful at the next level? Because that's what we're finding, is if they're not mastering them, they're falling behind as it gets harder and harder because they don't have the foundation.
And not all standards are treated equally. And having the collaborative conversation of, okay, which ones are? And it's not me saying that, it's everybody having a discussion of what is. And then asking the four questions. What are we going to do to teach this? What are we going to do if students don't learn? What are we going to do if the students learn it already? You know, so how do we build in the RTI program, you know, interventions go?
When you look at the first question, what do we, what do we want kids to learn? That's creating a viable curriculum. That if I have two math teachers and they're both teaching algebra one, one is not getting a better instruction than the other because there's a foundation of what kids need to master. And then when you go on to those other questions, when they're not mastering, that's really going to push the level of the abilities. We have to do something. You cannot not be successful. The students cannot not master.
Can't just send them to geometry.
Right, because it's only going to complicate.
It's going to be worse.
Should I take your time or?
So, does anybody have any questions? Comments, feedback? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry?
Any comments?
Usually there's not an interaction. If you want during the, during the public comment, if you want to say something, then they can do that too at that.
Thank you, Ms. Sara. Next, we'll move on to our bond updates. Superintendent Wamsley.
Oh, you see, we are, we're underway with a lot of the projects. The curb and gutters should be finished this week. You can see the redesign of the high school parking lot taking shape. Painting is scheduled to begin at the end of the week, so you start seeing blacktop surfaces in the areas where we redo parking lots and so forth. We are on track to be, have the parking lot done by the first, there's a soccer game on the 22nd, they have that parking lot open for their first home athletic event. Fencing is going up along the baseball and softball fields. They were pounding in the post of JV field today. Just to reiterate with the board, in the original scope of the project, we were not planning on redoing the dugouts on the current varsity softball field. From the time we started this project up until probably June-ish, when I sent the board that, that it was after the last board meeting, around that time. The foundation in it had cracked completely and they were actually heaving on the inside. And the brick was actually placed on the slab. There was no foundation for those bricks. So, it was going to have to be replaced sooner or later. So, we extended the contracts to demo those. That, that stuff has been ordered and it will be finishing in the near timeframe of the bond. Some of the small projects, you see the, the restrooms, we got stalls being divided, partitions being installed in the high school that were part of the bond. The shades in the gymnasium and the oxygen, the electric shades, so they'll be installed in that.
The shades to keep the...
The sunlight out. That is...
Praise Jesus. Oh my God. That, when's that happening?
They are, the shades during the electrical was being done. I don't know if they saw them working in there today. I didn't get a chance to go down the press there. Have they started them yet?
They, the conduit's off and they ran wires today.
So, basically what will happen is, depending on the season...
Ten years. I'm just saying.
Depending on the season, that light comes in and they literally blind players while they're, they're playing. So they'll be able to adjust the shades electronically on the oxygen.
Yeah, it's hard, hard to hit that volleyball when the sun's in your eyes. Praise the Lord.
Scoreboards arrived. They're on the trailer for the new fields. So, the poles for the scoreboards are already installed, so they'll be installing those scoreboards on the athletic field. Just a reminder, next summer will be the finishing of the bond projects. The road along 32, along the front of the middle school, the middle school parking lot and back of the middle school, that will be finished next summer, which will complete our bond. I do want to make this point, not only to the community, but also this board. You took a gamble when you, we put this on the ballot and the community supported us with this. The timing has been perfect because if we were delayed one year, the cost increases that other districts are going through right now. My colleagues, superintendents are cutting back projects to get minimally what they have to do for the bond because the dollars are just not there. So, timing-wise, this community picked the right time to do this. So we got a lot of, a lot for our investment, a lot more than we usually plan to be able to do. So, that's all we have on the bond.
Can I, can I just, I must ask the question first, the dugouts look great, but the JV baseball, the dugout is right in the middle of the sidewalk?
Sidewalk will go around.
The sidewalk, sidewalk. I said the sidewalk was going, but it's good that we're saying it to the TV camera.
The sidewalk on that one will go around it. And then behind the backstops are cement slabs for the fields so that if people are bringing chairs or if we want eventually investing more bleachers there, we've got the foundation for those slabs too. But yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, next is the portion of our meeting for public comment. If you would like to step up to the podium and make a comment, you have three minutes to make a comment. This is not a question-answer portion, but if you do have a question, we will be able to get back to either Superintendent Wamsley or myself or President Mashawn. We'll get back with you. Would anybody like to address the board and make a comment at this moment? Okay, if you could please step up to the podium. There should be a piece of paper there for you to write down your name and your email or phone number, whichever you'd like. Thank you.
So is my turn to start now?
Start? Nope, I should probably wait. I need to.
My name is Brad Keegan. I have two small children. One is going in the second grade, one's going in the first grade. I also have a son who is three years old. He will be attending preschool. However, he'll be attending preschool at Lance Cruz. We chose to go to Anime Birdie because we feel that Richmond's program is, doesn't offer us enough options. I'm in a fortunate situation that probably a lot of parents are. I'm fortunate enough that my wife can stay home and raise our kids. But we feel that it would be beneficial if Richmond could offer a three-day program.
For four-year-olds?
For four-year-olds. So, we're starting out as three-year-olds, but because they don't offer a three-day program for four-year-olds, we chose to go to Anime, Anime Birdie. We did have our first two children as well. So, looking towards the future, with the community of friends that we have and stuff, I think that within the Richmond community, there's, there's a lot of concern over that. I don't feel like I'm alone. So, that's just one of the things that I thought would bring three-year-olds' attention. Don't need an answer on it. Our decision has been made. But if things were to change next year, I would love for my son to, to attend preschool in Richmond. It's a lot of actually running around for my wife. It's, it's, but number two, there, number one, there's the aspect that I don't want my wife teaching my son how to read. I want him, my wife, teaching my son the alphabet and how to count and all that stuff. But the financial burden as well, three days, a three-day-a-week program versus a five-day-a-week program, the five days is substantially more money. For a person in my position, we have to, you know, when I'm the sole breadwinner, we really have to take that into account. So, that's a comment. Thank you for hearing me on it. I hope my three minutes is running out because I have two more comments. An unintended consequence of, Renee? Of the program that Renee brought, the PLC, a likely unintended consequence of that would be retention of teachers. So I think a $13,000, $13,000 investment is probably going to pay off substantially in keeping your employees happy and keeping good employees. So, that's just something that came to my mind. Number three, I'm asking for help from, from the Board of Education and from, from the schools. I have to, in light of everything that's going on as far as safety goes, I have to talk my wife off the fence every day. What happened in Oxford, what happened in Texas. I would like to see a little bit more information put out maybe from the school to help me sell it to my wife if we are safe. What are we doing to improve? Regular updates, possibly. It's a battle that I have to face every day. I have a military background. I was in the military for a long time. I, I think a little bit differently than she does, but, but I definitely see her side of things. And I wonder how many other parents in the community are thinking that way. I think there's probably a lot. So, I would like to see the school engage a little bit more on, on what we're doing as far as safety goes. How, how are we ensuring that doors are staying closed and locked? What are we doing? What precautions are we taking every day? We see that there's a police presence. We see certain things, but I think the commitment to communicating that with parents is, is important, very important this year. I've literally had a conversation every day whether we are going to homeschool this year or we're sending our kids to school. From my mind, we're sending our kids to school. But I have to, I have to battle every day. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Mr. Keegan, did you leave your phone number or something?
I did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? We'll move on to our next superintendent. Would you like to play the button? Superintendent Wamsley?
Hey, well, the budget was signed over the summer. The governor signed the budget. It was the overall budget for the state was about $19.6 billion, which was, when you actually look at what the budget, the governor signed, it was a true compromise between what the governor originally proposed, the House wanted, and the Senate. It's $500 million less than what the House wanted, $1.7 billion more than what the Senate wanted, and $1.3 billion more than what the governor wanted. So, they came and met in the middle. And that that we have is a $450 per increase per student. Again, mimics last year that all foundation-based foundations in the state of Michigan have the same per pupil dollar, which is $9,150. But I want to be clear, this does not mean that every district is funded equally per pupil. There are still some districts, when you look at all the categoricals that they get, that are $11,000, $12,000, $13,000 per pupil. Richmond is one of the many districts that is at the minimum foundation. There is several billion dollars that were left on the table, and I think that's important for the community to know, from this current year's budget as well as next year's budget. The belief is that there would be some tax relief, deal cut when they come back in September. It's to be some type of tax credit, tax reduction. The concern that I would have, and obviously I want to pay less in taxes too, like everybody. But once you make that reduction, the odds of it ever coming back is going to be, it's a harder battle to increase taxes, but it becomes a permanent reduction. And I've said this as we went through the budget, my biggest concern is that we, we have sustainable revenue, that we're not in this position where we can run this program this year and we got to cut it next year because they're not going to give us any dollars. Just to give our teacher group a step, which on the matrix is one whole step, you know, it's about $130,000, $140,000, just that. And that's not even doing any increases on other groups as well. So, minimally, to maintain health insurance increases, electricity, just like everybody in their home is facing right now, they've got to have a system that builds that in. There are some positives in this budget, which in my career I never thought I would see. One is the special ed has saw the biggest increase in funding. It's 75% of the base foundation plus a 28% reimbursement rate. Why this is important is because of, Tammy, what's the term for special ed? Maintenance of effort. You are now establishing that as your basis. So, they can't cut, they can do anything they want to, but the odds of them cutting special ed, it is no secret to this board and to the community, it costs more for, to educate a special education student. And right now, we are paying that difference out of our general fund. So this puts more dollars into what it truly costs to educate our special ed students, which frees up general fund dollars to do other things that it was originally meant to do throughout this whole process. That's, that's a critical piece. There were several things that, that we don't have yet direction, like every district's at-risk, our at-risk has been increased. We're waiting on clarification from MDM, what those dollars can be spent on and so forth. We are receiving a school safety funds. We are receiving a school safety funds, per pupil, but yet there's no direction on what those, what, how we use them, whether it's a reimbursement, whether it comes in our state aid payment. As I talked to this board back in June, you know, investing in night locks is one of my priorities. We have, I've been working with the architect because there's a process that has to be done in terms of the state fire agency bureau has to approve it, we have to get a sign off from this local fire chief here. So we're, that process takes several months to do. There's a mental health, there's some general guidance that we will have that we can use. It can be used for counselors, school nurses, et cetera. But these are one-time money, there's no guarantee these categoricals will be there next year. So as we've, as we've used these funds, we want to make sure that we can sustain them. Just like the ESSR funds, we have one more year of the ESSR and then all those funds are going away. So that, in talking with President Mashawn regarding this agenda, I originally put on their discussion in the FY '22 budget, and we will have that at the next board meeting because there's one, some of this additional dollars that we can plan based on our assumptions. Again, what we built the budget on was assumption enrollment, and we built it, I believe it is on $300 increase per pupil, we got a little bit more, so we've already spent part of that increase on contract settlements and the stuff we've done. There is some boilerplate language that was included in the final budget, there was two ones called section 8C, which I find is interesting. A cyber school gets the same funding as we do, but yet they don't have the infrastructure that we do and expensive, but they still get the $9,150 per pupil that we do. But they put in the budget that cyber schools, MDE is prohibited from requiring cyber school pupil participation in educational hours, and it prohibits the MDE from tracking cyber school participation through attendance. That's an interesting concept because if I alter a student's schedule, if it's in the best interest of that child, I get less of an FT for that child and they're allowing it for cyber schools. And again, I'm not here to critique any, any, any group because I think it's a parent's right to choose what's in the best interest for their child. I'm just arguing, the critique is that we all seem to be on the same playing field. We all share the same. I do not believe they should be the same per pupil, they don't have the costs that we have from transportation costs and that. They have some others that we don't, but there's a different, most schools, most states, I should say, fund their cyber schools, usually around 70, 80% of the foundation allowance. Michigan chooses to at 100%. The second thing, if you remember in the previous, we had the extended COVID-19 learning plans that we had to, every month that would come to you, here's our data, here's our plan, no change. They revised it to say that the section required a COVID-19 learning plan for last year, but not for this year. So they retroactive it to finish it out, so we don't have to do those COVID plans for the '22, '23 school year. Welcome to state government, they do things after the fact many times. So a good investment in the budget, substantial increases to ad res funding, special ed, et cetera, but they also put over a billion dollars towards the MIFsers. Every year when we do the budget presentation with the auditors and will be coming up, they're going to tell the community what our unfunded liability is. Basically, if this district were to dissolve, what the community still is left paying in a nutshell. And it's billions statewide, it's an unfunded, so this brings it down. Currently, for every dollar that we pay, on average, we pay 43.28% for the retirement system. When I started my educational career many years ago, it was less than 20%, it was around 10%, and it has slowly crept up. There is a categorical that the state sends us money and then we turn around and send it back to the state as paying that down. But that's a huge, it's basically one, 50 cents on every dollar is for the retirement system, which that in itself has inconsistencies among school districts, both public and private, or public in charge. The other one that is worth noting is House Bill, HS 4375 was approved. Basically, it allows retirees to come back and work, but they put a caveat, they can't come back for nine months. And if you're retiring on the border of, well, do I want to retire or not? That caveat is now, what we all believe has limited our pool of retirees because once you're out, you're probably into some other industry, a private sector, not necessarily coming back. But if you're a college employee and you retire, you can come back and work immediately. So there is two different sets of rules for public schools and there's one for the colleges. And we talked before, college funds are coming out of the K-12 budget, which was not the intent of that school aid fund, but they've now even set two rules. So if there's ever, if you're a conspiracy theory, if someone believes in conspiracy, what better way to attack public education than limit their pool of worried, short teachers?
I thought that was the whole point of that.
They kept the nine months in and the, supposedly the Office of Retirement Services had a big say, it would be too hard to calculate. But as of now, I know there's efforts to change that legislation when they come back in September, our legislators, but as of now, there's, it's a nine-month wait. And I just look for Richmond, we've got a lot of singleton courses out there, but we've had some phenomenal teachers who've chosen to retire. That might be a course that they pick up that we just needed one section.
Right.
You know, we are desperate, us in every district, for science, math, special education, but yet there are teachers who are retired who can't come back and work because of this law. So it's just something to think about and if you have a, if you want to conduct your legislature, I will help you craft that and tell you the words to say it because this doesn't make sense. On the district's part, today was the first day for fall athletes, for fall sports, so good luck to our athletes. A lot of happy, happy students out there getting back to it. Just a reminder, mark your calendar, the first day of school is September 6th, it is a half-day, a half-day of school. September 7th is a full day of school for K-12 students and the first day for our preschool programs is on September 7th. Our plan is to put welcome back packets in, our target date is September, September?
Oh, boy.
August 22nd, that is our target date to drop information in the mail, class schedules being released on Power School, class assignment, so that we know there's a delay in our mail delivery. So we want to give as much time to those packets to get to our families. Blue Devil Days will be Monday, August 29th for Richmond High School, Tuesday, August 30th for Richmond Middle School, and Wednesday, August 31st for Lee Elementary School and the preschool programs. All three nights are five to eight. More information will be coming regarding that in the packet. And finally, you may have noticed from the listening audience, I know the board knows, our board member, James Serord resigned, so that's why we have an empty seat. I'd just like to thank you for his time and his service on the board. That's all I have. Oh, no, I don't, Ms. Era, I'm going to turn it over to you, she's got some exciting news.
So we're beginning something really fun for the preschool and early, early childhood program. We're beginning preschool socials for any entrant preschooler this year, so we're going to start off with our summer socials. So they'll be four times a year, there'll be like a fall social, winter social, spring social, you get it, right? Seasons, but it'll be themed and it'll be a lot of fun. So the theme is books on the beach, so families can bring their beach towel, we're going to lay out on the grass, we're going to have some stories, they give these cute like little buckets filled with books and bubbles, we're going to have snow cones and it promotes early literacy and that family engagement with our families and our students and it's kind of a chance to kind of meet each other, socialize with the young kids, meet their teachers and just kind of a fun social event that we're going to launch this year. So you have a flyer and come on out August 23rd with your towel if you want to join us.
And Ms. Era, this will be on social media all over.
I know.
She loves posting, so, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Wamsley and Ms. Era. All right, next up, we have items of interest from the board. Board member Telltale?
Nothing.
Anything from you? Board member Cunningham?
No.
Board member Sutton?
I'm just going to say thank you again for the summer school. Jackson had a blast and was one of the ones in tears on the last day of having to not come back. I stepped in there a couple times and no thanks. It was a zoo, but it was a fun zoo, so he had a blast with that, but I'm excited to start the new school year and get going again.
Great, thank you. And I am all set. Being no other business, we will adjourn meeting at 8:19. Thank you, have a nice night, everyone.